I call this meeting of the Evendale Council to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Justice for all. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Sextro?
Here.
Ms. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Putoff?
Here.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
We're going to move on the agenda to the last item to come before council tonight, which is the Resolution 25-01, and I ask permission to read it by title only. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
A resolution condemning hate group ideology and rhetoric. May I have a motion to spend a second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Now a motion to adopt the resolution as an emergency.
Mayor, before we do that, I think this resolution needs to be amended. It doesn't quite go far enough because the last item, I believe, should read, and I'm making this in a form of a motion, be it further resolved that we stand in solidarity with all individuals, the village of Lincoln Heights, and all other affected community, and all other communities affected by the actions of hate groups.
I'll second that.
Ms. Smiley Robertson, will you give that to me in writing so I can add that to it?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
The resolution is so amended. Question is, shall the amendment, shall the resolution pass? The clerk will call the roll.
Need a motion?
Need a motion for the clerk to call the roll.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
The resolution passes as an emergency. That will bring us to the resolution discussion, and I would ask the police chief to talk a little bit about the incident the other night.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt again. Before the chief speaks specifically to the ordinance, as the chair of the council committee responsible for oversight, there's some things that I think even maybe the chief doesn't understand had a bearing on how we handled it, and I would just like to share that with the community at large quickly. In the, for those of you who don't know me, I grew up on Prairie Avenue, and if you're familiar with the area, that's directly across the street from people who live in Lincoln Heights, and some of you probably have my mother as a substitute teacher. But I've also served on council in Woodlawn and been the village manager in addition to being on council here, so I'm familiar with the hiring of police officers, have been involved in the selection and promotion to police, multiple police chiefs in both communities, and been part of designing the procedures and the process for so doing. I share that with you just so that you understand, in this position, in the direct, in the aftermath of George Floyd's murder, we undertook a review of all of our procedures and policies in the police department and used, to review that policy, the Eight Can't Wait principles that guided improvement in policing procedures in the 21st century and was also designed to improve police department accountability. So that all took place where Chief Holloway was not the chief at the time, but one of the major tenants of Eight Can't Wait, or the second tenant, is de-escalation, and I'm not going to speak to what the chief is going to speak to, I'm going to allow him to speak to that, to let you know that that occurred. And then a couple of years later, we actually looked at use of force video over a three-year period, and actually, the body camera footage was reviewed with our police chief at the time for how our officers conducted themselves during that time. So that's all gone into whatever there. And lastly, I kind of want to say, because those people who know me know when I say, I've already called, talked to my, some of my colleagues prior to being at the march, which I was at, some of you may realize somebody was called on to lead a song, I was the person that led, led the song. So I was there at the prayer vigil and, and the march, so I'm very serious about this, that we're going to do a review. I know everybody has called for their investigation to make sure that we're following everything we should find and, and to get the lessons learned because of that. Now, I'm going to yield to the police chief to go through the specifics, but I just wanted everybody to know that that's what we do, that's part of my responsibility, is the chairman of the committee that oversees the police department, and I also oversee the hiring, the chairman of the hiring committee. So with that, I'm going to yield to the police chief.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Very helpful, very helpful. Chief?
Thank you. Mayor, if you don't mind, rather than being at the podium facing Mayor, you and council, I'd rather just address the crowd if that's okay.
Okay, that's fine.
What I'm going to say here is, I'm going to, I'm going to speak from, from two levels. I'm going to speak to you from a personal level and a professional level, because they're both very relevant to this situation. Like all of you, when I found out what was going on out there on the overpass, I was shocked and offended. That behavior, that message that those demonstrators came to share was vile, it was hurtful, and it was hateful. I do not want to see those messages in my community. I have worked here in Evendale for 33 years. The first time I would have responded to Lincoln Heights to assist them with something would have been in January of 1993. I am not new to this business, I am not new to this community, both from an Evendale standpoint and this general area that surrounds us. In a better world, none of this would have happened. People who carry such hateful and divisive messages would stay in the shadows and keep their ignorant opinions to themselves in a better world. Unfortunately, we don't always live in a better world, and sometimes the worst of us in humanity show themselves in terrible and ugly ways. I had a conversation yesterday with a member of the Sheriff's Department Leadership Team, and, and I've known him for a long time, and, and my conversation with him was this. I said, you know, if by coincidence there had been a meeting in Lincoln Heights on Friday morning at 10 o'clock before any of this happened, and you had Evendale police officers there, and you had Hamilton County deputies there, and you have residents of Lincoln Heights there, and the question would have been asked, would everybody raise their hand if you think neo-Nazis are reprehensible people? Every single person in that room would have raised their hand to agree that neo-Nazis are reprehensible people. That meeting never happened, but the sentiments were always there. Unfortunately, they came to our communities and they chose to carry that vile message. And that's where I'm going to switch this over to a little bit of a professional discussion as to how we, as a police agency, responded to this incident. And again, from the earliest moments of this, I'm fully aware of how that message was going to be received by the residents of Lincoln Heights. As our officers arrived on the scene, I was on the phone with leadership from the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. Our officers and our supervisors at the scene were coordinated with the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office because we fully understood the greater impact of that demonstration. What our officers encountered over there was a dangerous and volatile situation. There were numerous out there, among those original demonstrators, that were armed with rifles and handguns. Our officers and the other officers involved applied de-escalation skills.
Quiet, let the chief have his say.
Our focus, our strategies, our strategies and our efforts were entirely focused on public safety, making sure everybody was safe, from the original demonstrators to the counter protesters that showed up, and every motorist who just happened to be driving by, and every employee of every business nearby. The oath we take as police officers requires us to uphold the principles of the United States Constitution. Our mission statement at the Evendale Police Department states that we are committed to the principles that define democracy, including the protection of constitutional rights and equal protection under the law. That was a challenge we faced, to allow people to exercise their constitutional rights and at the same time maintain public safety. Everything we did that day was focused towards achieving those goals. Now that this incident has passed, we will continue to review everything that happened that day, from our actions and the actions of the protesters. In that review, if we find where it's appropriate to assign criminal charges, we will meet with the Hamilton County Prosecutor's Office to discuss those in specific detail. We will also, as we always do, review all of our practices and our actions to see if there's ways we can improve on situations like this in the future. I thank you for your time, and I will now turn it back over to the mayor for the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, we're now going to enter into ability for the public to have a say-so in the matter. We have a few rules we are going to apply tonight. First of all, please sign in because we are going to call people by the time that they signed in out in front. If you don't sign in, you won't testify. Second, we are asking you to limit your remarks to a period of three minutes so that everybody can have an equal opportunity to testify tonight. Third, this public hearing will then go on for about an hour so that we have, again, an opportunity for everyone to testify. Fourth, we are not here to answer questions tonight. We are here to listen and not to respond. We're here to listen to what you have to say. We ask you to be respectful to what you have to say. With that, we're going to go to the public questions, and first...
Gina?
Mrs. Moore, but I think you just want to be recognized, is that correct?
That's all, I, I just care about the safety of my children and the...
Gina Moore from the Princeton School District, you're from Princeton School District.
Yes, sir.
Garrick Burkhart.
Good evening. Good evening, council. Do I need to announce anything of who I am or whatever? My name is Garrick Burkhart, I'm born and raised in Valley Homes in Lincoln Heights and...
Did you raise the...
Born and raised in the Valley Homes in Lincoln Heights and then moved to Woodlawn, had the pleasure of being on council for 12 years, sometime with Ms. Smiley Robertson, vice mayor twice. I, I have a couple of questions because I kind of have dual residency, permanent residency in Woodlawn, but I have property in Lincoln Heights due to my father residing in Lincoln Heights. But it's just a couple of questions that I just want clarity on. There was something on social media that showed a U-Haul truck parked and a police car in front of it initially. Lachlan has come out with a letter saying that they had nothing to do with that, that was not their police car. Is Evendale going to put out a letter saying that they, that was not their police car and they had nothing to do with the initial gathering of them and bringing them to the demonstration site? And I know you said you're not going to answer that question tonight, but, and if you're, and if, and if Evendale was not a part of it, just like the chief said, they got notification from Hamilton County, so, I've been in municipal, I've been in government, police departments talk, when you get to all call, you talk. So Evendale, even if it wasn't their police department, you have talked to other municipalities that know whose police car that was in that photo. Are you willing to let us know, the residents of Lincoln Heights and Zone 15, what police car initially was there when they initiated this, were loading up in a U-Haul, which is illegal to ride in the back of a U-Haul? So my other question is this. My other question is this, for police, your dog is, what's the terminology for the police dog? Is it a service dog? Is it a police dog, canine dog? In your legislation and your paperwork here, said that one of participants in the hate crime said that they had a service dog that they were trying to get to. Did the service dog have a tag that his owner cannot be identified? Does the service dog have anything that you could identify who perpetrated? And again, your police department said it wasn't a crime, but you wouldn't have all these people here if we didn't feel it was a crime. So was there any identifying evidence whether it was the license plate of the car, which they said it was from Avis, but it had some high-priced rims and tint on it? I don't know how many times Avis rent cars like that. So I'm just wondering, and one of my main things is, Evendale going to make a stance like Lachlan did?
Your time is almost up.
Is Evendale going to make a stance like Lachlan did and put out a letter to say they had nothing to do with the beginning of this demonstration at all and was unaware of this demonstration to the fullest?
Thank you. The next one is Emma Thicke.
I wrote this before, I wrote this like once, so I wrote this before I was able to read your guys' statement. I'm not a resident of Evendale, but I grew up in Evendale. My sister is still a resident in Evendale, my mom is still a resident. My sister and I both, both coached the Evendale youth T-ball team, so I want to start by acknowledging and expressing appreciation for the quick action taken to de-escalate the situation and prevent violence. However, I have serious concerns about the actions and decisions made after the incident, including the lack of proper investigation, identification of perpetrators, and accountability for this hate-driven activities that occurred. The details of the incident are deeply troubling. The men carried automatic weapons, they were transported in the back of a U-Haul, and they engaged in tactics meant to prevent fear. The N-word was repeatedly shouted during the incident, adding to the racially charged intimidation. Despite this, no IDs were checked, no charges were filed, and the group was merely escorted out of Evendale. At a February 10th community meeting in Lincoln Heights, a representative from the sheriff's office revealed that Evendale police stopped the group in Lachlan and brought one of the members back to inquire about the vehicle, and then allowed them to leave without further action. Deviating from this a little bit, because I did read the statement that you guys put out about how the, you guys assessed that giving them a, like, small traffic, traffic charges wouldn't do anything, and I disagree, that identifies at least one of the members that were there. Under Section 2927.12 of the Ohio Revised Code titled Ethnic Intimidation, hate crimes are defined as offenses such as aggravated menacing, menacing, criminal damaging, or endangering criminal mischief, or certain types of telecommunication harassment when motivated by bias of, bias based on race, color, religion, or national origin. The statute enhances the severity of the original offense, elevating to the higher degree. Given the use of racial slurs and intimidation tactics, these actions clearly qualify as ethnic intimidation under the law. The armed presence, verbal abuse, and organizing targeting of the community should have been investigated as a hate crime. The Evendale Police Department's failure to enforce the statute is deeply concerning. Following the incident, the police department released, released a statement asserting, "The protest was occurring on sidewalks designated for pedestrian travel. The protest, while very offensive, was not unlawful. The protest was short-lived in duration. The protests left, protesters left the area on their own. No further action was taken by the Evendale Police Department." The dismissive characterization ignores the legal and social gravity of what transpired, what transpired. Hate crimes are designed to instill fear and provoke unrest, simply allowing the group to leave without consequences.
Ms. Thicke, your three minutes are up.
Can I just say my last part?
You just got one second.
Okay, I will skip to, I would like to urge the council to explain why IDs were not checked, why no charges were filed despite clear evidence of criminal behavior with racial intimidation. Enforce Section 2927.12 of the Ohio Revised Code to ensure that the future hate crimes are fully investigated and prosecuted. Implement procedural changes to ensure that hate crimes are handled with urgency and seriousness. Develop stronger communication and collaboration with neighboring communities like Lincoln Heights, ensuring that Evendale's leadership is present in those key discussions and meetings, and provide regular updates to the community regarding progress of these measures to restore trust and demonstrate a commitment to inclusion and safety.
Next witness? Next one is Gary Busham?
Brown.
Brown.
Brown, okay, Mr. Brown.
I'm just going to just take off where Eric Ruffin left off, just like, you know what I'm saying, Evendale, and a lot of, let me hear it for them three minutes, Evendale called Lincoln Heights, called us niggers, you know what I'm saying, in different ways. Roach killed a black guy down in U-Haired, niggers. We, we listened to Target Range on a daily basis, for some reason it was even louder today, niggers. This happened as far as, like, you know, on the bridge or whatever. Y'all would never let all-black, you know, militia like that come over here in Evendale. You go to Walmart and shop for 15 minutes, they feel like you stealing, even though, take them, question them, and then, you know what I'm saying, determine that. So in my opinion, we, we had no, I guess, support from Evendale. Y'all didn't even come to our thing yesterday to represent or whatever. And then you said, you said something as far as respect. So when do we give respect? As far as being fellow, fellow Princeton people, because we go to school together, our kids go to school together, I guess, just neighbors, because Lincoln Heights stay in Walmarts, we, we make Evendale a lot of money, you know what I'm saying, and all, everything else, whatever. So, and it was crazy, the, the black representative, the only one that kind of made a statement. So I'm thinking in my mind, and then it's like, oh, these people back here kind of looking like it's the 60s and they mad because we here, so I'm thinking in my mind, so we steal niggers. So let it be known and let us move on knowing that. And I mean, if anybody in Hamilton is white, let, let it be known, like, you know what I'm saying, young black, like, black people, so I won't expect nothing. So we, we expect y'all to be, you know, what y'all are to us, for the neighboring community, as far as, like I said, Princeton thing, as far as y'all police, but y'all don't call us niggers, every, everything that happened, from Roach to, like, the Target Range to Friday. Ain't no way y'all can make excuses for what happened. And then Eric Ruffin right there, and the police in front of him and in back of him, and they calling niggers and waving guns, how could that not be what they, the statement they made, like, no crime was committed? Sure it was. Like, let get somebody else in my rest of my time.
Kathy Keraton, let's state the facts here. First and foremost, let's talk to the police chief. Where are you? You should be front and center. Peter Filacci is one of your sergeants. He was present, standing there in this village of Rock, of, of Lincoln Heights, and when we questioned him on his reasoning for being present, he gave a shrugging of his shoulders. In fact, not only was he present, he was the sergeant, Peter Filacci, the sergeant for the village of Evendale. We also saw, council, that this particular officer seemed to be the one who was with the neo-Nazis, let's call them what they are, they're not demonstrators, they are a hate group, behind the Lachlan marathon. Let's state the facts. No one on your city council, no one in your police department, your city, whatever you want to call him, the village administrator, right here in the building, because he also has authority of this city, has made a statement to be, to, to eradicate the fact that he was present. That is wrong, and guess what? Your salary, your salary, all of y'all salaries are paid by the taxpayers of the village of Evendale. So they demand answers, and also, your dismissive attitude tonight is totally disrespectful. You should allow everyone, every single person, a chance to speak. Do you know what a fellow's not going to call a nigger? Do you know? Do you, you have a smile, back, let me see, give that. Ms. Smiley, that's true, village of Evendale, your seat, you're your fans, your seat might also need to be recalled. So let me get to my point. Who were the police leaders giving directives on 2/7/2025 at 2:00 PM? Their names and their titles. Name of the officers who were on taxpayers' time, seen in the village of Lachlan, assisting, assisting the neo-Nazi group, the hate group. Was there a permit? And if there was not a permit, why didn't your officers, Officer Holloway, why didn't you all make immediate arrests on these hate groups? Furthermore, we are calling for an immediate investigation into Sergeant Peter Filacci as he was present, standing toe-to-toe with the community. We are asking for an immediate investigation into Mayor Finer, however you pronounce your ass name, for his dismissive manner at tonight's meeting. We are also calling for an immediate investigation into Chief Tim Holloway for his lackadaisical response and not coming out and being honest. Sir, this is not honesty. This is not the truth. This is not the truth. You know it's not the truth, and we demand it. Now, let me talk to you about our black babies, our black babies who are scared because this neo-Nazi hate group spew hate. Imagine if it was your child, or your child, or any of your children. Take the smirks off of your face, get to work, and we demand justice.
Casey Haberstall? Not here?
I'm sorry. PC?
Haberstall, okay.
What was it?
Haberstall?
Casey Habetler, thank you. Casey Habetler. I stand before you as a queer trans person and a fierce ally of the black community. I'm a person whose Nazis have invaded our drag shows, our prides, and the silence of the government is deafening. I also stand before you as a trans person whose rights and identity have been outlawed by the government. I digress, because this is about the black community, and this is about the hate crimes that we saw. Let's see. The symbol of the swastika displayed recently by armed Nazis, not demonstrators but Nazis in Lincoln Heights, is not just a, not just an emblem of hate, it is a direct threat to our safety and our future. There is no other meaning behind it, it is a symbol of terror, a weapon of intimidation, and a declaration of violence. When these armed Nazis paraded through our streets, they were not engaged in a peaceful demonstration. They were sending a message, a message to other hate, to other hate groups and a death threat, not only to the Lincoln Heights community, but to this entire city. The swastika is not a relic of history, it is a living, breathing symbol of oppression and death. It demands our collective action, not our tolerance. For far too long, hate groups have been emboldened by the silence and inaction from institutions that are supposed to protect us all. We live in a society that is too often prioritized protecting rights for those who seek to protect... We live in a society that is too often prioritized protecting rights for those who seek to harm us, while simultaneously turning a blind eye to the world and present dangers faced by marginal communities. And in the same breath, we witness unjust murders of unarmed black people by police, whose rights seem expendable in the eyes of the very systems meant to uphold this justice. We cannot allow these dangerous ideologies to be normalized or overlooked. This is not the first time neo-Nazi groups have marched through Ohio, but it is the first time that they have been confronted by the people who refuse to accept hate in any form. The whole nation is applauding the bravery of Lincoln Heights displayed that day. We gathered today not to accept vaguely assertions, but to demand answers and accountability from our law enforcement and our community members. We deserve more than empty statements, we deserve transparency. First and foremost, we demand to know why Pete Fallis, whatever his name is, was assisting the U-Haul before it made its way to the bridge that day. His involvement raises serious concerns, and we must be given an explanation along with the full access to his body cam footage that day. Additionally, we must address why law enforcement provided an escort to the individual linked to extremist ideologies. Why wasn't allowed this level of support? Why were no checks made on their IDs to ensure that they were legally permitted to carry firearms, given that many of these neo-Nazis are felons? This lapsed procedure puts public safety at risk and cannot be dismissed. How much time do I have left? Okay, okay, I'll keep going. Why was there a SWAT team after the neo-Nazis left? Why was there a drone that came after the black community to target them? Why were there twenty-plus officers? I was there that day too. I woke up from a nap, and I saw that neo-Nazis were in my backyard, and I tore out of my house to confront them, because that's the only way to deal with this violence. None of this bullshit of, of we tolerate, we don't tolerate this. If you don't tolerate, make laws. The outlaw swastikas in our neighborhoods, do something about it. Or else you're just as much of a fascist as they are. Thank you.
Senator Mayor, as I always call you, and to those of you who I don't know, there's many of you up there that I do, the people in the audience don't know that the recreation center we once had, you saw to it that we have. We burned the ice.
(inaudible)
Let's talk. Let's talk. Let's just not.
Calm down, quiet, quiet. Let Ms. Mitchell talk.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Finan. As I was saying, we, you gave us the money to redo our floor through the Reba grant, you saw to it, you saw to it that the head start that many of them came through, the head start building, the senior senator, the senior building, the senior senator that was there, we had lifted house, because...
Please, please let Ms. Mitchell talk. Please let the witness talk. Otherwise, there's no point in having a hearing, if you don't let her talk. Try again?
And because you allowed, you saw to it that we would have state, state agencies in that building, it brought revenue to the village, and Senator Finan, you know that I respect the hell out of you. However, however, it's like it was benign neglect. At quarter to two, I sent a text message saying, you need to be here, somebody needs to be here. Now, we had a meeting that no answers could really be given, because that was really to hear people. And a lot of times, people don't understand that, that just like you said tonight, you're not answering questions. Many people here tonight think that when we do that at our council meeting, we're being wrong, but that's just, that is just the procedure for all councils that say they don't have to answer. But to neglect, to neglect coming, sending Chief Holloway, one person, just one person coming to the meeting would have helped a lot. In your... I'm looking at all of them, just let me talk. Just, I'm gonna go to the other side.
Can we have some more?
Just one person, Mayor. Just one person, that's all I ask. It would have been better if Chief Holloway had been there, because...
Please, order, let the witness testify.
Because the media stated, the media stated that Evendale was to lead investigation. Now that bothered me, because I'm thinking, maybe Lieutenant Steers should do that, but that's not what the media said. The media said Evendale. All right, so Evendale has precedence over the Hamilton County Sheriff, because either that particular part of the overpass belonged to Evendale, and so you all had jurisdiction. In your resolution, Mayor, Mayor Finan, Mayor Finan, you allowed the other young lady. And in my time, I didn't, I wasn't talking, because people were being rude, and I wanna be heard. In the resolution, be it further resolved, that we demonstrate our commitment to public health, safety, and general welfare by fostering an environment of mutual respect, understanding, compassion. I don't think mutual respect, understanding, and compassion was exhibited by Evendale by not showing up. All you needed to do was show up, you didn't have to answer any questions, but your presence is there. The mayor of Glendale was there, Lockland sent something, even if Evendale sent some, the resolution is fine, and you know, it is a piece of paper, and, but if we had gotten something from Evendale saying, hey, we're sorry that this happened, and we're going to do a resolution? So, the other thing, Mayor, is that we were here last week, we had a good meeting, and what you need to really understand, why it bothers me, you're going to lead Lincoln Heights, you're going to lead us to, you're going, you're going to lead us to get some other things done that will benefit, that will benefit Evendale, and especially the village of Lincoln Heights. We worked very hard, we know that for years, we were concerned about the fighting range, and between the village of Lincoln Heights, and the Heights Movement, and the commissioners, you all are getting some property that's going to benefit you. Not only that, we hope it will benefit us, but we have to be, we have to be ensured that you all are going to show us mutual respect, understanding, and compassion. And I hope that we are all still on the same level when it comes to our politics. Thank you.
Karen.
I'm sorry, I can't read this last name, but it's Karen.
Karen, okay.
Sorry, I didn't...
We're gonna try to stick to the three minutes, so you all have time to testify, but you're making it tough.
You're not really listening, you're just watching the clock, it doesn't matter. Really listening, really listening.
I am very upset. I'm Karen Casman, Karen Hankston from the village of Lincoln Heights. I am very upset. As I see all of y'all sitting in the front, y'all so disrespectful. Not many of y'all showed up in the village of Lincoln Heights, and what they said to us is y'all don't care. I have a problem when you have one of your policemen sit down there with the U-Haul, bring them to the village of Lincoln Heights, turn around, escort them out of the Lincoln Heights. This right here, there's a crack in the ass, right here, whoever wrote it, is telling a lie. You don't have all the facts in here. I'm very upset. So yeah, I'm speaking aggressively, because I'm upset, because we lived in the village of Lincoln Heights. It was ethnic intimidation, there is a law. They should have been searched, I don't care if they was on a sidewalk, carrying guns, they were intimidating black people. And when you sat there and said like, we, they didn't do nothing wrong, like we was wrong because we made them leave, when I personally asked them, could you ask them to dispose? They told me no. So what would we supposed to do, just stand there and be quiet? No, it's over for that, it's over for that. You are a disrespectful in Evendale, and I don't understand what all we have with y'all, because I just got on council, but I would be looking into it. I don't think you guys need to do an investigation, when it was your officer involved, from my understanding, it need to go to an outside agency, the FBI, need to be the people, the person that's involved in this, and doing the investigation. I don't think you guys are qualified, and I don't think you're gonna be honest. You could have sent anyone down there. You have a number of officers, but for you not to even, if you was that busy investigating some stuff, you could have called a lady officer, you could have sent one of your ladies in high heels, but nobody came to represent Evendale. Y'all are disrespectful.
Okay, my name is Nona R. Calhoun Mumia, and I'm a councilwoman at Lincoln Heights, the village of Lincoln Heights, and I am the co-chair of the Law and Safety Committee. As my fellow councilwomen have stated, we expect a lot more from the village of Evendale when it comes to collaboration, when it comes to allowing us to develop together for the safety and for the, for the safety and the help of our residents. I think one of the main issues is the bias, the racial bias that was shown by the police officers. We understand that if it had happened in another community, that we would have been, the members, or the demonstrators, if you call them, the nice name that you use to call them, would have been arrested and taken away. But instead, you allowed them to abuse verbally, to demonstrate openly their hatred, and you pushed it off as if it wasn't anything. And it hurts our community, it hurts our ability to collaborate, it hurts our ability to even trust the things that you said. And then the document that you presented today also weakens our ability to work and to improve our relationships. One of the things that this has done is that has made our resolve as a community stronger. We are definitely at the part of rebuilding Lincoln Heights. We are definitely gonna make our stand to show our nation that we will not allow that type of behavior, that type of discrimination, demonstration. We're not gonna just pass it over. This would not happen in Zone 15.
At 12 Ken Street.
Well, Ken Street.
Is it Wiley? Come on now.
We have a Charles Wiley.
Yeah, 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 I'm next, yeah, Wiley.
You're Wiley, you're Charles Wiley?
Charles Wiley. So, I'm gonna come a little different, because we got the community dealing with all the issues. So I'm gonna come with, I'm gonna come a little different, and I just wanna tell you a little bit about me first. Me and my wife was foster parents for like twenty years. I was a therapeutic foster parent, I was a therapeutic mentor for seventeen years, Beach Acres and all of them, but in our home, we had all type of kids coming to our home. Kids that tore up other people's homes, never tore ours up. And I'm going here, we had a lot of white kids coming to our home. I had white kids come in my home from Mason, all over the community, and I, you know, relating back to, I got a young man, and his sister came. When they knocked on the door, nice house, but when they knocked on the door, the case manager, they looked at us, and they start crying. They was like in shock, because they came from a Republican family, so you already know the story. So they was crying. These kids in our home, I'm not gonna say their names, but in due time, to this day, they love us so much, they love our community so much, they end up graduating from a Withrow. The young man, he loved me so much, she wrote a letter about us over their parents. So what I'm getting at is this, who all got kids in here? Got kids? Who all want their kids to grow up into a nice, healthy, safe community? So now, this is where I'm going with this. I started organization back in the early nineties, Black Positive Brothers and Sisters, we did a lot in community. I had eighty men in my organization, I had about sixty women, I had organizations in a couple other states, we did a lot of positive things. So where I'm going with this is that, look at the community. That's all y'all heard, Super Bowl, we different? Our community is not that community back in the forties, the twenties. We want a viable country for your kids, for their kids, for our kids, we gotta work this out. So I say to these hate groups, you know, they ready to burn this country down. Our community here, look at them, we different. We got soldiers. We got soldiers. Me, I die for my community. I die for my white kids I brought in my home. So with me saying this, come on, and I hope you guys who are here at Channel Five, put this down. We need to come together, not for y'all, but these babies. And if y'all can't come together for these babies, your babies, your babies, and y'all want them to live like this, so be it.
I'm out of here.
Michelle Gottlieb? He passes.
Mayor Ruby, her mom is in the hospital, so pray for her.
Janseel Blanks?
Janseel Blanks.
I'm sorry, could you say your name again?
Janseel Blanks, born and raised in Avondale. Long live Lincoln Heights, long live Lincoln Heights. Let me start off by saying, Evendale, Evendale owes its existence to Lincoln Heights. Let me start off by saying, um, Evendale, Evendale owes its existence to Lincoln Heights. The fact that people that smirk like you and people who are interested in protecting white supremacy like these officers, or pigs, as they're more commonly referred to as, white supremacy came through, put 75 North through a vibrant business district, just like they did in every major city in the United States. That's when the highway system was designed. So it's very ironic and telling that those Nazis showed up on the overpass, over 75. The people who formed Evendale and these other white communities, they redlined and redistricted and took away the money-making aspects of Lincoln Heights and they zoned it so that that money went to establish and grow the white communities, Evendale, namely. That's the history and I bet some of y'all didn't know that, but look it up. First of all, let me just address my blood. We can't legislate hate out of the hearts of angry Saltines. Only thing that we can do is build together. So no matter how many allies step up, no matter how many council meetings we attend, the work for a better tomorrow is on us. We've been begging people that look like him and him and the gentleman that's nodding at me throughout the proceedings and the miss lady over here and her that's making a little hateful faces because she don't like what she's hearing. It don't matter. We've been begging them for equal rights and justice for a long time. Uh, let's stop doing that. Let's just build our own power. Get your firearms, get slings for those rifles and shotguns, get scopes and sights. Reach out to me, I go to the gun range, I'll go to the gun range and help train some of the young soldiers, I'll buy ammo. Um, we need to do things that's going to protect us. Let's take our babies away from this evil system and teach them ourselves. Let's grow our own food on our land. Let's grow our own food, let's practice, let's stay armed. To the gentleman who rolled up on the, the video, I think he may have spoke earlier at the meeting. And, um, when I saw the video initially, uh, I was at work and he, he brandished a firearm and he was playing Fight the Power. A million different emotions ran through my mind when I saw that video. For one, let's just understand that had something tragic happen during that interaction, that, uh, the officer over here, the police chief, they gonna side with them angry crackers, man. They gonna side with the Nazis. It's not neo-Nazis, ain't nothing new about them. So I would like to admonish y'all that, you know, learn your firearm laws and don't brandish a firearm unless you gonna put something through the heart of one of them evil bastards. Don't pull nothing out unless you gonna use it. Alright? This is trash, not only is it poorly written, but it's lies throughout. These efforts to limit interactions between groups likely to be hostile are consistent with law enforcement best practices. That's bullshit. That's a direct contradiction. Your best practices would have been to get them racist crackers up out of there, man. Now, me saying this on camera may get me in trouble, but I'm 41 and I've been angry my whole life. So being angry, it ain't, it ain't really about being angry no more. I have to direct that in a more positive fashion. I have a five-year-old son and of course he likes fire and the police officers. He five years old, he can look at them as heroes, but my dad taught me who my natural enemy is and I'm gonna teach my son who our natural enemy is. Every creature, every life form on this earth teaches his offspring what to look out for and who his natural enemy is. So I may advise y'all to remember, some of us done forgot who the natural enemy is. Stop begging these folks. Stop begging these folks, man. We gotta turn inwards and we gotta take care of our own. The police, they broke, they don't have the budget to do patrols, they never been here to save anybody or to patrol our neighborhoods or to look out for us. So it's bullshit for us to show up and ask them questions as if why they're not protecting us. Modern policing arose out of slave patrols. Police, sheriffs, two different things, it arose from slave patrols. And y'all still perpetrating the same bullshit because y'all handled them Nazis with kid gloves, man. Because they your brothers? They your uncles? Your grandfathers? Your husband? Your sons? You keep on looking, I hope that you learned.
Your lovers.
Right? So y'all need to address them. We gonna do our own work, y'all need to address the people that y'all go and sit down and things either with, who casually throw around to turn dinner and who want to take it back to the old days and all that. Lastly, we are our ancestors. We are our ancestors. Just like some of them are their ancestors. Ain't too much changed. Ain't too much changed. Ain't too much changed. I don't live in Evendale, man, so I don't care about nothing you gotta say, man. I've been angry for 41 years of my life. Right? So now we gonna start doing something more fruitful. For 20 years, I seen Lincoln Heights complain about that gun range. Man, these Saltines don't care, man, or they say they been done something about it, man. They don't care about firing bullets on the outdoor live range so that them babies gotta hear it when they outside of the daycare centers. They don't care, man. Lastly, we need to develop our intelligence capabilities amongst ourselves. We need to stop going for them feel-good moments for social media, put down the fucking phones, let's do some real community work. Alright, we tired of feel-good moments. Yo, we gotta do some, something real, man. We gotta do something real. They don't care. Now, to the people that show up, ones that want to be allies or whatnot, I appreciate it. Again, go home and talk to your peoples. Y'all know who they are. You know better than I do who need to hear what's being said, who needs to know the real. No matter if it's Obama in office, because he was part of the Bush family, if you look it up. It, it, nothing changed when he got in office. They put him in office so that we went to one extreme and then they brought Trump so that we go to the, to the whole other extreme. We being played against each other, understand? So it don't matter who in office, we still got work to do. Elon Musk throwing up that Nazi salute?
Right.
Elon Musk just threw up the Nazi salute. Right? 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 So this is the dog whistling that happens. All of that bullshit that Trump was doing, throwing paper towels in Puerto Rico and hurricane victims, all of the foul shit that he's done, it just emboldens y'all, man. It just emboldens y'all. You got a job to do. You in Evendale, I live in the city of Cincinnati, you got a job to do, man. So just do your fucking job, man. Y'all know the Nazis wasn't supposed to be there. And y'all let them break all type of laws and just coddle them and handle them with kid gloves because again... Alright? I apologize.
Hey, listen, man, these one of those got beautiful.
Tamara Carter?
You can follow them.
Tamara Carter?
They wanna make us uncomfortable, make them uncomfortable. Let's show up at their house.
Tanya?
Go organize right there.
Yes.
I'm right here. Hey, how you doing?
You can start anytime you want.
Um, yeah, I just got a couple questions for, um, the police. I want to know, I want to know, why was it okay for them to be able to leave with their firearms? Why would they not stopped and took away? I want answers, we really want answers. We got kids in our neighborhood that's traumatized. Kids are walking around with, kids are walking around with knives tacked, strapped to their stomach trying to protect their family. Y'all don't even know this, man. Y'all need to get a grip. Y'all helping these people and it's not okay. I'm talking, but I'm passionate, so I'm yelling, but I mean what I'm saying. Y'all are police, why you get on looking at me, I looking at you now, my brother. The camera is on you. The camera on you. What are you want to do? What are you wanting to do about your officer? Leading your people, are your them Nazis? In our, in our community and in U-Haul. We got footage of the tricky U-Haul going back to schoolhouse, going to school hours. We want end, sir. We're very passionate. I'm screaming, I'm yelling, and I'm dead. Seriously, we want justice. If our cameras don't want it, we want it and we gonna get it. We're going to get it. I don't know if you, but that shit gonna get run out today. We're gonna find out. We're gonna find out. I'm going to talk to everybody until they want to say, oh, this, and this, and this, and this. Saving the best? This is not saving the best. This is not saving the best.
Calm down, calm down.
I'm fine, I'm fine. This is a statement, this is a, this is a statement of bull stuff, okay? This is not true. You come stand down here on the Dad Don Bridge with us in the coat and protect our peoples. Send your box out there for us with some heat and clothes or something. Have some type of courtesy for the shit your young peoples pull. We sick of it. We all need to come together, white, black, pink, and purple. We need to come together because this ain't right. I just suffering that y'all say all this shit, but y'all don't answer not one question. Not one. What are you gonna do? What are you going to do about it? Are you going to investigate? Y'all is your for, maybe yesterday, bitch, I was a bad kid. What did y'all came up? What have y'all came up with?
What have y'all came up with?
What did you come up with from yesterday that y'all been showing up to argue? What did you come up with a maximum question? I can't hear you. I don't hear you. I got the answer for y'all, don't. Y'all, I don't care about that, I got one too. I got one. Y'all, y'all, this ain't it. That ain't it.
Sutter?
This is not a town hall for others to speak. Give us answers. This world ain't mandatory answers. A rubbery metal bridge. Give us answers. With all this stupid mess. And I can't remember the word on the bridge. Then, Tim Holloway, give us answers.
Vanessa?
Give us answers.
Vanessa Sutton, do you want to testify? Do I answer, testify?
Vanessa?
Vanessa Sutton?
Vanessa, who's Hannah?
Okay, you guys.
Carolyn, make them answer. Carolyn, make them answer. Make them stand, just try to care. Carolyn, make them stand, make them come check. They probably tried to send a letter to check.
Alright, uh, hold, hold, hold on, huh, huh, okay. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Let me, let me speak, please. Let me, let me, let, uh, let, excuse me. Let me speak, let me speak. Okay? Alright.
Settle down. It's enough, that's enough. Settle down. Now let people talk.
Okay.
Nor you.
Wait a minute. Mayor, mayor, let, let, let me, let me say something and then we can go back to hearing everybody else, okay? I'm gonna tell you, and I'm gonna tell you all about everybody up here, that there are some things that need to be said tonight because I've been there. 23 years ago, I was sitting out there talking to people up here. The strategy does not work with us not responding. I would like to, okay. I would like to hear what everyone who signed up to speak has to say. So that is the reason for trying to go through what everybody says. But you need to understand, and I'm gonna say this here because I've said it to some of the people around here. We need to be aligned. Evendale and Lincoln Heights in letting hate groups, whatever you want to call it, let them know that they do not have a safe haven when they drive down 75. If they're on the bridge or they're on the east side or the west side, they are not welcome here and we're not gonna tolerate it. But for purposes of tonight, can we please hear everybody who asked to sign up? And to the extent that some misinformation is there, we need to clarify that misinformation after everyone speaks. Some other things require some more work and we will get back to you because I sit on this council and I will not accept anything less than that, okay? And I'm going to reiterate, I mean what I say. I was there at the prayer vigil and march, okay? I have communicated with some of my counterparts in Lincoln Heights and I spoke with the mayor and assured them that we would be aligned because we are neighbors, we all attend the same school district and it's in everybody's best interest. And if we do not line up and approach each other with a spirit of love, the hate folks are gonna prevail. Now with that being said, I am going to ask, please, let everyone, because some of you have already had your say, let others who have signed up have a chance to, to say what they have to say. Then we need to clarify some of the misinformation and get back to you on the other things.
So Carolyn, I wanted to come back up, I know I spoke before. Again, I was on council for 12 years in Woodland, vice mayor twice. You were village manager when I was vice mayor. The village had a 30-day policy because we said the same thing. We can't answer our questions at night. Time frame when we would answer those questions. It's very disrespectful for this council to just leave it out, oblivious to say, we're not answering questions. You need to give, if you're not gonna answer questions tonight, you need to give these people a timeframe when you're gonna have a written answer to all the questions that they're asking. Because you're really being disrespectful.
If please pronounce your ex-race, we know who you calling because we didn't understand who you called last time. Even if you guys spell it.
So I want to make sure that this person who lives at 12 Ken Street has left and does not want to speak. Something Williams, Chuck Williams, Clark?
Yeah, he gone, he left.
Okay, okay. Now we're on...
That's me, actually.
Okay.
Let me, before my minute starts, because this is, oh, Ms. Carolyn, have you seen the video that everybody is referring to of the Lock, uh, that happened in Lachlan, of the police officers, well, it's, again, him, but it's two of them. Two police officers loading them in the U-Haul truck. Just asking, have you seen that yet? Before my minute starts, I just want to know, if you haven't seen it, I will clearly show it to you right now. It's only 45 seconds, have you seen it?
Okay, okay, let, let, let me, let me say this. I have watched a lot of video. I don't, I can't say definitively that I've seen that or not.
This is why everybody's upset.
I will look at it and we will get back to you and I understand Mr. Burkhalders' comment about a timeframe and we will address that and give a timeframe back to you, okay? To address all the answers to that because that's only fair. And it's not that I don't want to see, don't put words in my mouth, I understand this game. But I'm asking that every, that we continue to let him speak. To let him speak.
Yes, I do. So it is Councilman Day, it's Mayor, Mayor Finney, so I just want to make sure we're clear on that. I appreciate that. Sir?
Are you a councilman now?
Yeah, we, we had, the last time we had a conversation, it was at, I am a councilman, but you know that we had a conversation at the, um, hey, that's funny, that's, I appreciate that, that's funny. I know, I know, that's funny, that's funny. Alright, 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 thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Finney, yeah. So, like I said, good evening, everybody. I stand with you, I stand with you, not just as a concerned citizen, but as a representative of the community. That's, I had enough, just like everybody else. Enough of the silence, enough of the disregard, enough of the blatant disrespect that continues to come from this administration because let's be very clear, your absence last night was deliberate. You had an opportunity to show up, you had an opportunity to be held accountable, to engage the community, the decision that impacts everyone. Last time I checked, we are elected officials, we said we are here to answer to the public. Nobody came yesterday to answer, I understand we're not your public, but nobody came yesterday, nobody responded us today before. Why did we run? Why did we run for council unless we wanted our title, or do we wanna do the work of representing the people? So let's not forget that as well, too. Lastly, but not lastly, but that's not the only thing that we demand answers for. Your police officers were caught, and I just wanna make sure we're clear upon that. Caught, working with known Nazis, loading them into a box truck, giving them an opportunity to come into our community and terrorize Lincoln Heights. This is not a rumor, this is not a question, this is a fact. And the fact that even after we had stand here and saw those words in two thousand twenty-five of what they called Mr. Ruffin, those things are unacceptable, and your police officer saw that. They saw that would happen to Mr. Ruffin. That is some completely unacceptable. This is not an isolated incident, though. You all hired Mr. Roach, a decision that would have gave immediate concerns to our community. You fought to keep the gun range operational for years that endangered our people. And let's not forget the history years, our brother said before. Your community was stolen from the village of Lincoln Heights from nineteen thirty-eight to nineteen forty-six, where our land was incorporated, the longest court battle in history that carved it up. Evendale is not here without G E, without the fact you stealing our land. So, right now, we are in extremely concerned manner, where we have video evidence, and I will put this, cuz it seem like the cameras right here from Channel Five. So just in case you didn't see it as well, too, and other individuals, if you would like to zoom in, and I could give it to you as here as well, too. So just let me know, I know you gotta zoom in. So once you zoom in, you let me know, and I'll hit play. And that'd be my last thirty seconds, since nobody else wants to deal with the fact that there's Evendale police officers. I just wanna make sure we clip on it. There's Evendale police officers in Lachlan. Go to it. There are Lincoln Heights, there are, there are Evendale, Evendale police officers in Lachlan loading up the Nazis in their pickup truck, which is illegal, to come to Lincoln Heights and terrorize the community. I'm gonna divide and accept them. Why did you allow it? Who made that call and said it was okay for them to do that?
And he's mine, he's mine.
And arrested.
And remember, the son of a bitch on there was one?
Twenty.
Right before a lot of their kids was getting out of school.
And it's all school room members.
Yep.
Doronda Calhoun, do you wanna testify?
I'm not gonna testify, Mr. Fine, don't worry about it. Last meeting you spoke, you should need to go far.
I'm waiting for you to finish.
No, no, you're not waiting on me. But wait on you to answer, sir. Don't wait on me, wait on me. Wait on me.
So, since you're waiting on me, I'll finish with this, Mr. Fine. It is very clear, it is very clear, that you personally have been attacking our community, and you personally have been fighting personally to make sure that the individual land that is due to us does not go back to us, and you personally made sure, and I allegedly, allegedly, that you allegedly have overseen an operation, because you are the mayor, you are the chief executive of your police office, am I correct? You oversaw an operation that allowed polar police officers to terrorize our community and scares, and I wanna know why, Mr. Fine, and as Mr. Duckheart said, I would like to know in the next thirty days. So please let me know your complicit stance and why.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
You got fourteen days to let me know why you felt it is okay to allow your police officers to set up and terrorize our community. And if you have nothing to do with it, then please let us know who does. And we're still, and just like you said, we're waiting on you. Thank you, sir. We're still waiting on you. Doronda Calhoun.
What did you say?
Doronda Calhoun.
Good, I like the way you use your pronunciation skills, let that go, sounding things out.
All right. As she said, I am Doronda Calhoun, and I am coming with some questions. You all keep using the word peaceful protesters. What was they protesting? Because how can you be a protester if you're not protesting anything? Because if the message is only about hate, that's not protesting. That is you soliciting, interrogating, recruiting, putting for fear, causing division amongst the citizens, not only of Lincoln Heights, because it was on Seventy-Five South. So everybody who rode Seventy-Five South saw it. You cannot call a group of hate people who are terrorists, because like the sister said yesterday, we fought against them in World War Two. They are terrorists against America, that you allow to come in to the neighborhood, and you call them protesters. What was they protesting? I want that to be answered, because before you can call some group a protester, you need to be able to explain what they was protesting. We was chilling, not in our own business. Matter of fact, for a group of people to call, the group of people of that neighborhood lazy, we don't work, we don't have nothing for ourselves, to call us all these names. You made sure that they showed up during the time, but most of us was either at work, going to work, or third shifters who was in their deep sleep, because they just had to get ready for work. So therefore, they came to intimidate our children and our senior citizens, because during that time, those was the only people that you thought was available. Because, because between the ages of twenty-five and sixty-five, at two o'clock, most of them either at work, about to go to work, or in their sleep, because they just got off of work from third shift. So, for you to say, and I'm saying it to you, officer, because I saw the tape too, and I wanna understand, why is it that you say that they was peaceful when I'm hearing slurs of being called from a businessman? I need to understand, why is it that you, being part of Cincinnati, well, not Cincinnati, Princeton School District, allow, because when we a district, we supposed to be one. So you allow your children, your grandchildren, to have to go to school with people that now are fearing for their life? And all they saying is Evendale allowed them to do it. Children mindset, let me tell y'all something about a child's mindset, because that's what I do for a living. A child's mindset is they do not have the capability of understanding the same thing as an adult understand, that's why they're a child. So all they know is Evendale assists neo-Nazis in our neighborhood to come to terrorize us, to intimidate us, and bring fear to us. What do you think that is gonna do to a child when a child from Evendale and a child from Lincoln Heights? What do you think you just did? Did they gotta go to the same school? They gotta go to the same school. What did you think you just did by allowing your officers to not only help them load up? You helped them, you gave them a police escort out of the neighborhood, and then you didn't even show up to say, "We don't even want it," but you could at least put forth an effort and say, "I'm sorry." Explain that, and then also explain why you say there wasn't no crime committed?
So, this is a, uh, Mr. or Mrs. Brown, I cannot read the first name. Um, Mr. or Mrs. Brown, I cannot read the first name. It's either Gary or a Casey. There is no address or no phone number.
Is it an email address?
There's nothing.
Nothing.
Jason Reese?
Nah, that's Reese.
And Duncan is next.
Uh, or Jason Reese?
Nah, I'm Jason Reese.
Jason Reese, okay, sorry.
Just like the candy. I'm up here, uh, I've been a part of Cincinnati. My family came here for this very reason. We helped found schools and neighborhoods, because communities felt the need to exclude black people. We traveled all over this country, helped found Fisk University. I don't know if you know about the Jubilee Hall for Lily Parham. That's my great-grandmother. I'm the Senator Charles and Lily Parham. The questions that I have, I don't need answers from you. The questions that I have, you have to answer for yourself. Do you want a community that you don't feel safe in? Do you want your children, your brothers, your sons, your daughters, your grandchildren? Do you want them fighting, whether to prove themselves not racist? There's a long history of people that stood with us, torn, feathered, hung. You know, freedom riders were right here from Ohio. Right out there, Miami University. They were told they was gonna lose their lives going down there, fighting the same people that protested on that bridge. You're old enough to know that fight. Some of you sat at your grandfather's knees and no longer here. It depends on what you heard. You gotta ask yourself that question. What did you hear? Were you raised this way? Are you fighting against it in yourself? When I asked the officer back here, I know there's a lot of anger, and I hope, and I've seen a lot of understanding. You understand the anger, you understand the frustration. You may not agree with it in its delivery, but you understand it. So the officer, I did ten years in prison, because a white man tried to kill me for no reason other than I was in the wrong place at one time. Took the stand, said he was gonna kill me. I didn't let that make me better. I didn't come home hating police officers. I didn't hate the system. I don't fault you. But what is the mitigating factor for how you apply the law? Is it disorderly conduct when it's a black man standing on a street? Does he get loitering? Are you questioning what he's doing? Are you saying, "Hey, you can't yell that obscene cuss word in public?"
And loose and hang.
Do that, does that same measure apply when it's someone white? I understand the need to keep safety, but who are you saving? Most of the time, police officers are there to pick up the pieces. Very rarely are they there to stop a rape, stop a bank robbery, stop a drug deal. But when you happen upon it, whether it's a traffic stop, it's called the bust of the century when you get him on the road. You had him on the road. You had him right there. They weren't protesting anything, they were inciting violence, using hate speech, using an emblem, not just directed at the black community, but at your forefathers. Yours, yours. If you are here in America, and you have some relatives that immigrated before the eighteen hundreds even, if they fought in World War One, World War Two, y'all fought that enemy before, and that wasn't your fight at that time either. Y'all had to get dragged into that fight. Don't get dragged into this one. Walk willingly on the right side. When they ask for questions, and I understand you don't wanna make any statements tonight, but give them. Show where you really stand, because silence speaks louder than anything.
Duncan from? Church, Church Avenue?
They all messed up the last name, don't worry about it. Uh, my name's Duncan, I grew up in the Princeton School District. Many of my friends are from Lincoln Heights, and, uh, I was at work. Friends hit me up on Facebook, they said, "Are you seeing this?" Dropped the ball by the time I get over there, I couldn't get anywhere near where this incident happened, over by the businesses right across the overpass. But, uh, it's clear that the police were not responding to the community's need, and, uh, they just aided and embedded these racists, getting the hell up out of there as soon as anybody gave them any pushback, which is, uh, something that makes me pretty sick. You know, growing up, thinking about people my, in my community, coming home, you know, out of school, and this is, this is what they see, and this is what law enforcement is co-opting, which is not particularly new in the United States. It's kind of a foundational piece of the country. And, uh, a couple days later, me and people who are Cincinnati socialists, just generally pissed-off citizens, decided to go march around Lachlan, put up signs on the overpass, maybe send a different message. Uh, and before we even got there, the police had the streets blocked off, like they're expecting something bad to happen. When something bad does happen, why is it that the only people that they're hand-holding are people who are just, whose ideology, it's not, it's not a protest, their ideology is the extermination of other human beings. That, that's what that is. It's, it's not, it's not an opinion poll, and America, too many times, is like, it's like, "Oh, it's just politics, oh, it's, it's, it's just, it's just my opinion." I don't really value those opinions, and plenty of countries have legislated into law how to rid themselves of hate speech. If Germany can manage it, how can we not figure this shit out? This, this, this morally emaciated, you know, body, it's like, to protect and serve, to protect and serve who? Like, a lot of these people that showed up at that, you know, that Nazi hate rally were from out of state. You're, you're not, you're not catching, you're not serving the people in this town, in this county, in this state, half-time even the side of the country. It's like, who, who are people looking out for? Who are police looking out for in this community? If I can hop on, if people can hop on a plane, go across a fucking continent, and, and show up where people live, and kids are getting out of school, and it's like, they're gonna, they're gonna live with that fear. I grew up playing sports, it's like, I didn't need to, I'm a white person, I didn't have to wait long to figure out what racism was when we went out to Glenn Estey or Harrison. You know, you're gonna hear the N-word from the stands, it's like, we're like, people telling their children, you know, and wrestling, just to gouge eyes, you'll, you'll hear it on the mat. You'll, you'll hear these, they're laying hands on you. Parents calling for violence in their children. This isn't, this, this isn't like some, some new thing growing. This is, this is a weed that people have to continually pull, and if you're gonna propagate this kinda hate by supporting these people visibly, publicly, you're like, y'all, y'all are on the national news. This is what you're known for. But nobody knows shit else about Evendale right now, except for this is what you're up to. So chew on that.
Kishara Count Talbot?
Hello, my name is Kishara Talbot, and I'm here today as a member of the Lincoln Heights community. And I just wanna know, was it okay for your officer? First off, he already escorted them out of the community. But was it okay for him to escort them on the side of Lachlan Local Schools? A school for pre-K through fifth graders? I will not for him escorting them at all, I think they should have been identified if anything. But he escorted them on the side of a school. You have a hate group with loaded rifles on the side of a school. As a person of the United States, I know you guys live by it, so I'll just say it. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, no union was formed. Established justice, no justice was established. Uh, cuz I'm shaking inside. I'm shaking, because this is what y'all supposed to live by. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility. Here in the home, provide for the common defense. You guys showed up in our community to help promote the general welfare, secure the blessings of liberty to our selves and our prosperity, do a day and establish the Constitution. The only... The only, the only people you guys protected that day was the Nazis. A terrorist group that's not from this domestic tranquility. Secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our prosperity. Do our day and establish this Constitution of the United States of America. That's the, that's the oath you guys took. And when it was time to show what you guys really stood for, it wasn't us. It wasn't the people of the United States. And it wasn't the community that you alleged that you were there to help. I'm calling for the moving of the officer that escorted that vehicle to that school, to that school area. And I'm calling for you guys to look within and really see what you can do to change it so that it never happens again. And lastly, I'm calling out for the people of Cincinnati to stop supporting Evendale. Everybody, I don't care what community you're from. I don't care if it's from Springdale, Woodland, Lachlan, Lincoln Heights, Belltown, Avondale, Everston, Westside. Evendale won't get another dollar for any of our people until we give justice.
Love?
513-885-4255.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Eric Ruffin and um, so I have a, a unique perspective and I, and I think that, so I lived in Evendale for 12 years on Lamarck Trail. I coached soccer. I volunteered as a referee. My three daughters were in the community. They were working in the community. They rode their bikes down to the swim pool. I have friends here in Evendale, right? I mean, I, I, I loved Evendale when I lived here. And you know, as I sat at that light, the stoplight, and the guys was on the side calling me the N-word and telling me to go back to Africa. And they got more and more angry as I ignored them and didn't give them what they wanted. They decided, and, and, and this is testimony because I wanted to report it to Evendale Police, but I had some concerns. And I'll tell you, I had some concerns. I believe in weaponry. I believe in protecting myself. I believe in protecting my family. I believe in supporting law enforcement. But as I sit there at the light, hearing this, and they didn't like what I was doing, which was ignoring them, which is what I have done in my life to gain the life that I have, is ignored racism, ignored the comments, acted the right way, wore the right suit, looked the right way. Um, I'm 60 years old now and I realized that these guys, they didn't care. But in my mind, I'm thinking that Evendale Police car is gonna come up here in a minute. I'm looking in my rearview mirror and I'm thinking, he sees this. She sees this. She sees these people yelling at me, sitting in my vehicle with guns, with masks. And I am a responsible, successful, hardworking citizen that goes into the penitentiaries, that has a pass to go into the penitentiary with no guards, no chaplains, no nothing, and help the people that I wanna help. I'm thinking, okay, I have something to offer them. I'm going to the school and I'm volunteering, talking to the little guys and the little men, saying, think before you react. Understand that if you get an education, that if you work hard, that if you become a good citizen, that law enforcement will protect you. They will help you. They will, and, and I, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking this. I, I, I've told my kids this. I mean, worked hard, put them all through college. They got great jobs. They're successful people. But I'm being called a nigger from the sidewalk. From guys with guns and masks with a police car behind me and a police car in front of me. And the one in front of me is watching and the one behind me is watching. And I'm thinking to myself, think before you react. You have people that are depending on you for a lifestyle. You have employees that look up to you that if you act a certain way or you respond a certain way, the goal of these punks were to take that away from me so that I would react improperly so that I couldn't keep doing all the stuff that I'm doing. Right? Yeah, we, 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 we've been on the soccer field, right? With the kids.
Many times.
Many times, running up and down. I mean, my kids on the soccer field while we were at Evendale. I know these kids. I know the parents. I know these people. And, and I gotta tell you, you didn't protect me. You didn't look out the way we looked out for those kids. The way we always, always, always put the kids first. Our responsibility first. We took our classes on coaching. We took our classes on everything that we were supposed to do. They did not protect me. Then, after I ignored these guys, they got mad. And they came off of the sidewalk, around my truck, took a picture of my license plate, came to my driver's side window and said, nigga, go home. And I'm thinking to myself, be cool. Understand, you are a successful, decent, hardworking, giving, decent, no, I am not a black man first. I'm a man first. I'm a business owner first. I'm a father first. I'm all that first. I'm a nigga second. I don't wanna be that. I wanna be what I am. Why did I have to stand there and be reminded of that and not protected? Not protected. When they walked off of that sidewalk and came over there, that was ethnic intimidation. That was jaywalking. That was, th- those are laws. Those are laws that are on the book. When they called me that N-word, that was not, that, that, that was, that, you can't do that. And I'm thinking to myself, they can't do this. So I had every right to blow their head off. And you know what? I thank God that it was me. And I thank God that it wasn't me. Because the trick, the trick is to get you off your game. Never let a fool take you out of your game. Never, never let a fool make you miss a step. Never let someone take you out of what God wants you to do. Because I realize that my actions and my reactions affect more than me. They affect the people that I help. They affect the people that I support. But I wasn't protected. Those are laws that were broken, that officers watched being broken. I don't appreciate it. I have never been ashamed of Evendale until now. I'm ashamed. I have given to this community. I have put into the children, the parents, the streets, the law enforcement. I have stood over there on that sidewalk and campaigned for people and passed out cards and everything. I have been here. I have been here, as well for Lincoln Heights, as well for Woodland. I don't understand why I was not protected. I don't understand. So halfway through that video, if you listen carefully, if you listen carefully to that video, about 13 seconds into it, somebody says, Sarge. He has a weapon. One of them guys with masks on. You can listen to it. He said, Sarge. He brandished a weapon. Who says Sarge? He brandished. Is that a police term, brandished? I mean, and who, does anybody out here say, you brandished a weapon? And why do we call each other Sarge, right? Now, it could have been a militia. It could have been another group. I understand that. But because of that, because of that, when I started to come to Evendale and file a police report, there's trepidation here. Because when I heard Sarge and I saw the car in the back of me, the Evendale Police car in the back of me, and I saw the sheriff's car in front of me, I thought, they got my license plate. And it's my main priority to protect my family. And it's my main priority to protect these people that I'm supposed to protect, right? I mean, we know that. We've been on the field too, right? With your kids. Right? So, so, I mean, I, I, I really, I keep coming to tears because there is a person inside of me that can come out that I am fighting. And when I fight that person that I'm supposed to be fighting, that I have fought my entire life, it crushes me so bad that tears run down my face because I know what that person is capable of. I know who that person can become. And, and, and I don't wanna be that person. I wanna be the, I, 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 I feel, you know what? I have gotten phone calls. But, but, so what I am, so, okay, so here's the ask. So I've told you who I am. I appreciate your ear. I understand that there are some issues that we need to fix. And I'm trying real hard to be as professional and parliamentary as I can with you. But when I didn't see anyone yesterday or the day of the meeting, it crushed me about the neighborhood that I have put so much into. It hurt me. Because I thought, I thought that I was part of this community. I, I really did. I really believed it. I really was expecting someone to say, that's Eric Ruffin. Because my name is all I have and I hold it to high, highest esteem. I was taught to make it better every single day. And I thought that when somebody said that was Eric Ruffin over there, oh, yeah, I remember him. So, so, okay, so the ask is this. I see the resolution and I appreciate the work that went into the resolution, but something that I would like to be able to do is anyone, anytime, and, and, and Charles Wiley was talking about this, uh, the other day. Anyone that is going to brandish or carry a firearm out in the open like that and walk up and down the street shouldn't be such a punk and have, and be able to wear a mask. You should have to show your face. You should, it should be illegal to wear a mask and carry a firearm. If you're gonna man up and carry it, let's man up and carry it. So, so what I would like is a motion from someone to add some type of language to your resolution that would say something about showing your face when you're open carrying a firearm. Kinda like when you go into a bank and, and you wanna, you wanna go to the bank and you have a hood on, they say, take, take, take it off. But I think these guys, you know, it's an ethnic intimidation resolution and I appreciate it, but I think that there should be something with this that prevents anyone from covering their face. That could have been one of our kids. That could have been somebody gay. That could have been somebody with, as a mixed race couple. That could have been somebody Jewish. That could have been somebody white with black people on the street. Because what's gonna happen here if nothing happens and we don't come together as two communities? If we do not come together and get to the state and stop this from happening, it's gonna be dangerous. Because we right now have young men walking around our streets with guns, holding them out, looking at cars. And I have to tell you, one week ago, I would have pulled over and said, hey, bro, let me holler at you. Let me, let, let, let me, let me talk to you a little bit about what it is that you're doing. I would have came with respect. I would have, I would have tried to under, I would have tried to make them understand that that wasn't the way. But now that my wife has to come to work every day in, in, in Tech View Office Center, I am thanking the Lord that there's a slower possibility that somebody's gonna be at that stoplight that we go by every day and the police are gonna be there and they're gonna start shouting to one, to my wife or one of my employees and they're not gonna do anything. So w- w- we really, because what's gonna happen when somebody comes over here to Evendale and stands there and says, you white people, we hate you. We hate white people with their rifles on the sidewalk. So, so, and, and I'm trying, I, I, you know, I wanna, I wanna respect your position. I wanna respect your board. I wanna do that and I'm going to do that. Because I need you to hear what I'm saying. And I don't wanna disturb what I'm saying with words that, that are, that are gonna go through your head. I, I, I really, really respect the order of the council, but please help me. Please, just, just do something. Say something that is forward motion in this resolution. I get it to say, we come against this, but common sense says, you shouldn't be able to pull a guy, look at a guy's car, get his license plate, put it on Twitter. Three million people have seen my license plate. Three million people have seen my license plate. I have gotten phone calls and I can't tell these cats out here who's calling me. I can't, I, whoa. But, 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 because I understand that, that, that sending, sending people away, th- these prisons are not, anyway, that's a whole, but, anyway, please, add something to this. We are tr- we are trying to get legislation at the state level that says to these people, you wanna man up? You wanna come in front of me and where, and, and put your gun up? Put your little Nazi sign up? Take your mask off. If you see me, I wanna see you. And, 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 and again, I heard that, no disrespect to the police, but when I heard that, I was concerned that I was going to tell, when you think about your daughters and your wife, y- you kinda go, I'm sorry, yeah. All right, okay. So that's it. That, I, please, someone, I, some, anybody, I, I would love a motion. I would love a resolution. I would love something added to that that, 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 come on, come on. Evendale could be next. Thank you for the time. I, I appreciate it.
Dylan Perry? I just need to add something real quick. I did wanna apologize for being late today. I accidentally sat in on the HOA meeting. So they do have plans to upgrade Evendale. So I wanna reiterate, don't spend your dollars in Evendale. Not a Walmart, not a Chipotle, not a gas station. Put them where it hurts until we get justice.
I appreciate all these people letting me speak up here and bringing their righteous anger to this podium. When I was a kid, I learned in school what everyone else learned in school, that this country is for the people, by the people. But as days go by, that is concerningly not true. I was at work when I saw a couple of friends of mine text me, "Hey, you see this happening on this overpass?" And I see a group calling themselves Hate Club. They're not even protesting anything. I couldn't imagine that people would be evil for the sake of being evil. I thought that didn't exist. I thought there had to be some reason that people would be doing something like this. But no, that's all they care about, just hate. There is no more Nazi Germany. There is no more fascist Italy. When these people come out here with their masks, their signs, their swastikas, their white power symbols, they wake up every day and choose that. And there needs to be something done about it. That brave soul right there who drove up to the people and had people yell in his face, tell them they gonna kill him, getting the pictures of his license plate, and nothing else was done about it. Police helping these people get into their little U-Hauls? That's, that's ridiculous. Do something about it. Please, do something about it. I'm tired of seeing this happen. See, I'm in Northside a lot. I, I, I'm in Colrain, I grew up in Colrain and everything. And, uh, but I'm in Northside a lot because there's a lot of music stuff going out there. That's the local music scene. And when it comes to hardcore music, rock and roll, punk rock, that sort of thing. When we see Nazis, white supremacists, fascist scum come to our little get-togethers and whatnot, come to our groups or whatever, let's just say we do more than have a stern conversation with them. These people are dedicated to defend their community. They love their community. We all support their community. And due to that, some of these brave folks have been taking up arms and setting up checkpoints. And of course, you know, just parading the street, keeping people safe. Why is that policed and not these folk? Cowards wearing masks, screaming hate slogans. What are you gonna do about it? I, I don't know what else to say to you. Do your job. Grow a spine. Do your fucking job. You've been over, I was watching you over here being on your phone. You need to stop being on your phone and pay attention to these people. That pig over there, that baldy? I'm, I'm tired of this. I'm tired of county officials, city officials, doing nothing but sitting on office chairs in desks in nice offices while their kids go to school in Springdale, Westchester, very nice, nice schools. Because they don't have to deal with this. They don't have to deal with what regular people have to deal with on a day. Oh, it's coming. Ohio is an open-carry state. You are allowed to carry a firearm openly when you walk down the street. And people, of course, reading the law, being educated about the law. They're doing it now. And you know what? I think I might join them. Because I'm tired of this. I'm tired of this. That's all I have to say. Grow a spine. Do your fucking job. Fix your face. Fix your face.
Harold Maguire?
Hello, council. My name is Harold Maguire. I was, uh, born in Hamilton, raised in Woodline, live in Sharonville currently, and a proud graduate, nineteen eighty-two class Princeton High School. I like to say, you know, behind you sit flags, and those flags mean something. Right? I mean, obviously, there are things of symbolism, but, you know, the state of Ohio, the city of Evendale, and of course, the, uh, the United States of America. Born out of revolution, uh, shaked off the tyranny of the divine right of kings, set up and experimented democracy of, for, and by the people. One thing they left out, right? Almost forty percent of the citizenry was locked up in chains. It was a mistake. That mistake begat tens of thousands of deaths in the most bloody war to ever hit North American soil. After that, we resolved that, but we still fell short by allowing our citizenry to be terrorized by the actions of the KKK as they plied their Jim Crow laws across the South. That begat, obviously, the movements of the sixties and all those people who had to die again for freedom. Because I know that in class, they tell us that the American Revolution wasn't seventeen seventy-six, but for black people, it wasn't until probably about nineteen sixty-four, when all the legislation that allowed black people to breathe and allowed my parents to move into a house which is very modest, but which they thought they would never be able to achieve in America when they were born. So, this place is, you know, I mean, this is a special place. If you've ever watched the movie Remember the Titans, when they broke off the bounds of segregation in that particular town, that was the same year, that was the same year Lincoln Heights was admitted to Princeton High School District. And I remember, even though I was a kid, because I made my mother read the paper to me, Lincoln Heights was orphaned. Nobody wanted Lincoln Heights. It's rational thing to combine with was Lachlan. Lachlan did not want Lincoln Heights. Now... We had our own school district. I didn't say anything was wet or nothing. I'm just, I'm just... Nobody up here has been a hundred percent historically correct. Okay? Nobody. I don't know, but can I, can I, can I finish? Mr. Perry, can I finish? Damn. The fuck? Oh, man. Anyway, I don't even remember where the heck I was, but I'll... I'll continue. Alright, so, so, uh, I know the superintendent, Tom Robert E. Lucas, stepped forward, and, uh, you know, I don't know whether he did it more for the sports or for the academics. Yeah, but in that, that same year that they did the thing in Remember the Titans, that happened here. We went all the way to the state championship game and we lost. Okay? So, I'm saying that these relationships between these communities that make up the Princeton High School District, you're in the game with us. Your kids already went to school with us. And I know you say that they were happy, there was free speech. Right? But we all know the limits of free speech. You cannot yell "fire" in a crowded theater. Right? I know you can't answer questions, but I know that's technically correct. Now, if you can't yell "fire" in a crowded theater, you can't come up with AR-15s on an all-black community, spewing a swastika. You can't do it! That's got to be the equivalent of yelling "fire" in a crowded theater. This is a group that, that threw a symbol of a group that caused a war that ca, that, that killed tens of millions, of people that gathered their own people and let another million to slaughter, who we conquered and thought was behind us. So, that can't be allowed. You can't say that's free. That free speech can continue with people flying swastikas and burying, brandishing AR-15s outside an all-black community. You know? Like I said, you're in it with us. And, and the lack of Caucasian support out there only emboldens the Nazi. Because silence ends up being complicity. Right? Think you with us. Think you with them. This is not a test for black people. This is a test for you! You wanna do about something that's obviously messed up, even if it is not called out in the criminal code. This is a time for common sense. Now, we just went through the history where we showed, where when we come up short, people die. Right? I mean, maybe tens of millions won't die here. But if you can't see that somebody's gonna die in this scenario, you are blind. You are blind. Do something. Let these Nazis know that your white folks in Evendale are not with them. They Nazis! Your parents fought until death! And now you say it's, it's free speech? That's, 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 that's the, that's not, that's over the limit of what free speech allows. That's only logic. So, when you guys go back and define what crimes that your police can attend to, that's gotta be one. It just has to be. It has to be. Whatever you do, you know, do something. Don't, don't let them think you down with them. Do not let these Nazis think you are on their side. Because if you don't do something, you don't do something, we gotta assume that you are. That you're one of them. We're supposed to be a "we." This is an effort in democracy. Right? Of, for, by the people. That's the government. Now, we here in Evendale, you guys are aligned with these communities all around you and share a common school district. All we ask is that, you know, you may not be classmates with anybody no more, you may not have ever attended Princeton, but you gotta show that you with us. You gotta show that you with these people. You have to. Mayor, I, I, I beg you to. And it's gotta be something that gets out in the news. It's gotta be something that's on all three of these channels. It's gotta be something that's on CNN. Or else, we have to assume that it's you, and then, then, then we have to boycott the Redding Road corridor. That cor, that corridor of Redding Road? I mean, that's all we can do is, you know, and, and people respond the month, that's all we can do is to boycott that corridor. That's it. You know? So please do something. Make this right. Right? Thank you.
Derek Thurman? Derek Thurman?
I'm gonna be real brief though. Somebody in this room live on Gl, uh, what, Glendale-Melford, Glendale-Melford Road. Somebody else live on Shearbrook Drive? I don't know which one it is, but... Somebody else live on Vaillart Ridge? Let me, let me go back real quick. Somebody in here live on, uh, Glendale-Melford Road. I don't know who it is, I ain't gonna point them out, but... Somebody else live on, uh, Shearbrook Drive? Somebody live on Vaillart Ridge? Yeah. Maple Tree Court? Otter Bend? Hey, man, I don't know. Demonstration vibe's looking kinda good right now, you know what I'm saying? So since, I mean, if that's what we doing, that's what we on? Oh, yeah. I'm just saying, so... Don't you got like three, three kids? Three sons or something like that? God bless. God bless. Appreciate y'all.
That being the last person that signed in, you did not sign in, sir. Did you sign in?
Hey, look, I'm gonna kick this real short. I'm, I'm gonna kick this real short.
Did you sign in?
But I wanted to come in here on some killing shit.
Did you sign in?
Let me tell you something. I want you to hear this. Y'all hear that? My two teenage daughters was in the backseat. You hear that? You can't hear that? My two teenage daughters was in the backseat. What I said I did, and they told me, just like they told me, they got, because I seen them drive past me. They said they got his license plate, they told me they got, that they got mine as well, right? But I got theirs. And I'm gonna tell you like this, this, this how it go down. When me and my boys show up, I ain't showing up for milk and cookies. I'm killing shit. I wanna shoot shit in the face, I'm still mad. My kids was in the back, so the motherfucker come to my house, I'm faking fucking shit. Simple as that. I ain't gonna come here on that ass kissing, I'm fucking up shit up. And any of them cops that had anything to do with it, man, I pray y'all did. Because I'm fucking shit up.
That being the last witness that signed up, the council will sit in recess. We're going into recess. Thank you.
Okay, the recess is over. We are done with this subject for the evening.
Mayor, if you, if you would, just for the record, uh, the clerk has asked me to make a motion to acknowledge or see the public comments and accept the packet of, of, of comments that were submitted digitally.
Is it seconded?
Seconded.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Mayla Robertson?
Having listened for some two and a half hours, we will consider everything that was said to us tonight, and, uh, we will consider in the future. I understand the sheriff is, uh, gonna convene a task force on the subject matter. We have offered to participate in that as she needs. So with that, we'll conclude this evening for that part of the evening. This takes us to our regular agenda, which, uh, committee report. Finance committee. Oh, I'm sorry. The minutes have been previously distributed. Is there any additions, corrections, or changes? Can I have a motion to accept the minutes as read?
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. Mayla Robertson?
Yes.
Okay, now committee reports. Mr. Finance.
Okay, finance update. Tax receipts in January were 1.366, uh, 62656, which is 321,000 lower than this time last year. Timely, uh, timing of receipts appeared to be the cause, however, more clarity will be forthcoming in February. Village results, so receipts in January were 1.656, uh, 43, 413. Expenditures of 2.132232, resulting in a net outflow of funds totaling 475,819. Ordinance. Transfer funds from contingency to community environmental funds due to costs pertaining to the new online permitting software and replacing non-functional equipment for the building. Hamilton County Audit began in mid-January? Audit began in mid-January. GHF, campground, uh, camp registrations just opened, and already 280 campers have signed up for summer camps.
No racist police!
No justice, no peace!
No racist police!
No justice, no peace. No racist police. It don't feel good, do it?
Go ahead.
Worth, working with Cincinnati Reads program and will read farm-related materials. Mr. Gardner presented his monthly report. Recreation, Recreation Center is under contract for fitness, swim safe, um, and, uh, Rosie fireworks for multiple years. Evendale 75th anniversary celebration is underway. Snow Much Fun was successful with some activities moved inside due to inclement weather. An adult red ball tennis program, UT, USTA pilot program on the pickleball courts. And then, part-time ordinance for building attendants. Service and engineering, two significant snowstorms resulted in 450 man-hours and 900 tons of salt spread. There were some trucks issues, but all back in operation. Have ordered 400 tons of salt. The crews did an incredible job. And thank you very much to the service department for our cleaning streets. Equipment, bucket truck, work truck, dump truck. We have reached out to the dealer, dealers and are anticipating quotes from these vehicles over the next few weeks. Department is currently excavating the area to install new material bins. Uh, this will be, um, a poured wall system with four bins, storage of mulch, gravel, sand, and waste collection. 2025 Recycling Day, please mark your calendars. May 10th, from 9:00 AM to noon, is our event. Building appraisal. When the village renewed our liability insurance with Ohio Plan in 2024, we noticed that some of the building's replacement values were undervalued. Mr. Jeffers met with IRR last week and reviewed the, all the building material, uh, building and village-owned, owns in order to set a proper value. When the renewal of the liability insurance comes due, uh, later this year, we will have new values. In anticipation of this, it will cause a significant increase in the cost of our policy. And then, uh, item F, finalizing plans on Recreation Phase 3. And then G, Mr. Jeffers updated the committee on new service building construction and other projects. And traffic counters on Cooper Road will be updated, um, again, I mean, back up again, and the digital signs will go up shortly. Ordinance, um, of lot split will be covered tonight. And that's all I have.
Any questions? Comments? Report will be accepted. Police and Fire.
Mayor, I'm gonna start with police and say that, um, the police report that we had was the meeting that preceded this. Um, and, and that before we leave here tonight, I think that we need to either set up time to discuss what we've had, heard, and provide some timeline of when we're gonna provide answers. That that has to be done. You know? And so, I'm not saying this for applause, I'm just saying that that's what needs to be done, and we need to be very timely, you know, about that. And that being said, I'm gonna apologize to all the department heads here because I probably can't do your report justice because I'm just a little... Not me. Let me just say it that way. So, moving on to Fire. The Fire Department has been doing some skills training in the Monty Building, which was formerly the QTC, you know, building. And the best of this abatement should have started, uh, this week on that. Um, and that the Fire Chief and, um, and Councilmember Patterson has been meeting with McCall Sharp regarding potential renovation upgrades or whatever we're going to do in terms of the firehouse and has proposed some questions that we're awaiting answers to. A big item is that our Fire Department received an ISO rating of two. We'd like to thank Captain Aspach, in particular, who led some of the effort that allowed us to do that. Our rating increased seven points, which is not an insignificant number. While we were at two before, it has improved, and it took quite a bit of work. And I'd like to compliment the Fire Department and all the things that have been done to make it so that our ISO rating, you know, has improved. The, having this wa- rating saves the residents as well as the businesses, a lot of money when it comes to their insurance policies. So, again, I'd like to thank the department for their work and for making this achievement of having raised, while we're maintaining an ISO two rating, but that we have improved our score. Also, light, light the night red used to occur in October, but this year it's gonna be April 27th to May 3rd. And also, that there's an ordinance on our agenda about certification of people who do work in slates. This is our third reading, and we've had an opportunity to provide the community as well as, you know, residential and business enough time to input, and it's on the agenda to consider tonight.
We're gonna pass it tonight.
Okay. Building planning and zoning, I'm gonna go there next. So, the demolition process for the former QTC building has begun, and we expect it to be completed early in March. And then, I mentioned the advanced manufacturing company, Monty, will begin construction of a new 70,000-square-foot building once the demolition is complete. Windows Direct USA is in the process of purchasing 10825 Medallion Tribe. They're moving their Cincinnati operation to Evendale, and they have about 53 employees. They're expected to close on the building in early March and move in sometime in April. Uh, the Building Department has contracted with the new, uh, excuse me, the new permitting software for a new web portal for online building permit submissions and all that should be in place by the end of the first quarter. If we get an exact date and it's earlier than that, uh, we will advertise that. But it allows applicants to be able to submit online that, and, and their permits online, and they'll have an ability to track the progress of their permit and make payment and receive approvals through this port hole. As far as code enforcement activity, the Building Department issued eight new commercial code enforcement violations and two residential violations in the month of January. Building permit activity in January, the Building Department received 18 new permit applications, issued 16 permits with an estimated construction cost of 1.5 million that generated $12,000 in, in revenue. Um, we, we also were provided with a report that in 2024, that the, um, Building Department had issued 207 building permits with an estimated construction cost of 44 million and a total revenue of $186,000. Cultural arts. There's an ordinance on the agenda for, um, appointment of Maria Yost to the Cultural Arts Commission. Our own David Elmer here is gonna be the February Artist in Residence at the Recreation Center. And the Tippy Toes Dance Company has been pu- purchased by a local Evendale resident. So, more to, more to come on how that impacts our, our cultural arts. And forgive me, I'm gonna refer everybody to the website and/or their newsletter about the upcoming activities for cultural arts for the month. And that concludes our report.
Any questions, additions? Uh, I would announce that, um, I'd like to have a special council meeting on May 4th, I'm sorry. Code enforcement?
What's, what's, I'm sorry, say your question.
Oh, that's a Fire Department code.
Sprinklers.
Sprinklers. It's for businesses. I think it's for business.
They are aware before, yes, they signed it.
For businesses. I'd like to have a special council meeting on May 4th. I'm sorry, March 4th. That would be between our two council meetings at 5:30. The reason is, the one item on the agenda, which is, uh, the community reinvestment corporate, uh, business, we cannot do because the necessary notices have not been given to Princeton School District. And, uh, we need to wait that long. But at the same time, we need to get it done because the, uh, this is Queen City, uh, sports. We need to get it done so that they can, uh, get into their construction mode. So, if you can check your calendars, May 4th, uh, at 5:30.
Between the two committee meetings.
So, the meetings are already on our schedule.
Yeah, between the two committee meetings. Be a little later on the second, on the second meeting.
March 4th, right? Yep.
I'm sorry, I keep saying May. I hope it'll come.
March 4th.
March 4th. Uh, also, the, um, Cultural Arts Center. Uh, we're going to have a groundbreaking for our ADA elevator over there on, um, when again, James? March, March 11th? March what? March 18th at 11 o'clock. So, you all are welcome to come for that. Okay. That's all I have. Anything else?
I just have a question. Are we going to schedule any kind of a meeting prior to March 4th?
I am going to be out of town until the 18th of March. And we're not gonna have it before I come, before I'm out, when I'm out of town.
Carolyn, there, there's a fair amount of pre-work that you and my committee can do to move this forward. I totally agree with you that what we've heard tonight needs immediate attention, and waiting for another month for the next council meeting is not appropriate.
How about, how about we, how about we do this? How about we come up with a date? We compare, and, and Bill, you're on this committee, that we schedule a committee meeting. Um, and Mayor, if you're able to participate and wanna participate, fine. If not, we understand that you're, you know, not there to discuss some of the things we have, because there are a number of a- action items. As you all know, I took, you know, a lot of notes, I always do. It's triggered a number of action items that we have to address, and we have to address them in a, in a timely fashion. So, after this meeting, let us get our calendars together. We will post the date on our website that we are going to do that, uh, when we are going to hold that meeting.
Carolyn, can we point you as the contact person too? Because you know a fair number of people in Lincoln Heights, and I wanna, I wanna reach out to you folks and make sure that we have enough contact information that we can keep you in the loop about what these meetings are and what they're there to discuss and all that sort of, that sort of thing.
Okay, can, can I say, with all due respect to council members still here, that I got contact information from another council member, know how to get in touch with another one, and that I will be in touch, to try to get, uh, get this set up and, and have you included in that. And I would re- remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to say that in hindsight, I had been my original intention to participate yesterday. But I had talked to the police chief and knew we were working on the body cam footage that I thought was important to get that out in the public view so that everybody could see what transpired, you know, officially. I also was guided by the fact that I knew this meeting was here tonight. Absent this meeting, I would have been there anyway. Because I knew from the time I heard about the incident that we would have the kind of meeting tonight that we had tonight. So, um, for that, just... I think my, our absence, or my absence, I'm only speaking for myself here as a member of Evendale's council, is being misinterpreted as not caring, and that is not at all the case. I just didn't think it was appropriate, because I understood it to be a Lincoln Heights Town Hall meeting with an opportunity for residents to talk to their representatives about the issues and concerns and all of that. But we will address everything and to the, to the person whose name I don't remember offhand, but that I wrote down, about, um, outside investigations. We have no problem with that, because whatever's, whatever comes out, comes out. It will not get stopped, however, I, they will not stop our internal reviews of how things were handled, because that's just what we do.
Well, before we, before we bomb too far along, I wanna thank everybody who showed up tonight. I heard a lot of stuff, but what I heard was a lot of passion and a lot of concern and a lot of care for children and a lot of things that by and large are positive. I know there's an enormous amount of pain. There's an enormous amount of, why can't we throw them off the bridge and do what we really wanna do? We understand how important this is to all of you, that we work through this. And I appreciate you showing up. I appreciate what you had to say. And just hang with us and be in this process with us. We've gotta build the trust together, and we're gonna do it. You just gotta give us a chance to step up and demonstrate.
And I made my peace with Laverne Mitchell. Who's an old, old, old friend, way back from the first time she ran for council.
Which is why she calls you Senator Mayor.
Please?
Which is why she calls you Senator Mayor.
That's right. All right, yeah. I'm, I wanna be at that meeting. I wanna be at that meeting. As mayor, I wanna be at that meeting. Let's go.
It's, it's, it's not. It's not gonna slow down the process. He's gonna, he's gonna be in, and the other part is, he was elected to lead this village. And everybody on this dais is gonna line up behind him and say, you need to be here. So, you just need to, you just need to say, he needs to be here. He's earned the right, and we're gonna stand behind him. Okay? We will work, we will work, we will work around it. That's what they invented Zoom for. Okay?
The questions all come back to me. Let's go with the ordinances then. Ordinance 25, 24, day of 75. This is the third reading. I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ordinance amending the provisions of the codified ordinances of the Village of Evendale relating to the fire code, automatic sprinklers, va- fire alarms, and ventilation systems. This has been three times. Time to vote on it. Clerk will take the roll.
And we have to do a motion to pass the ordinance?
Yes, we need, I'm sorry. We need a motion to pass it.
Second.
Who, who did the first?
Chris. Carolyn did the first. And then Chris.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson? Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 24-75 adopted as, adopted?
Adopted.
Next is ordinance 25-09. I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ordinance making appointment to the Cultural Arts Commission in the Village of Evendale and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
And now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 25-09 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 25-10. I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson? Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes. An ordinance approving a transfer from the contingency fund to the Community Environment Department and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Now declare, I now need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes. And now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Is that Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
And now declare ordinance 25-10 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 25-11, I need permission to read it by title only. So moved.
Second. Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes. An ordinance appointing Mayor Richard Finan and Chief Fiscal Officer and Accounting Officer Cynthia Karachi to the Hamilton County Tax Increment Review Council and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading. So moved.
Second. Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
And I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes. Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency. So moved.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes. And now declare ordinance 25-11 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance, ordinance 25-12, I need a motion to read it by title only. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson? Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
An ordinance adopting the 24, two, 2024-9 supplement to the Evendale Village Code of ordinances, including ordinances adopted through December 10th, 2024, and state legislation adopted through February 28th, 2024, and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance. So moved.
Second. Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes. Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 25-12 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 25-13, I need to read it by title only. So moved.
Second. Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to hire Doug Chamberlain as a part-time recreation building ground attendant and for the recreation department and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson? Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?